For the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Okay, um, public comments, please, agenda items only for public comments. Any topic related to the agenda may be addressed except for personnel or specific student issues. School Board encourages public participation at its meetings. To allow for efficiency in conducting meetings and to give each speaker a fair opportunity to present their views, the following shall apply to the public speaking portion of the agenda. Each speaker shall state their name. Any questions slash concerns be submitted in writing with speaker's contact information, name, address, and phone number. Each speaker shall be limited to a time approximately five minutes, which is agreed upon by the board. The board will not permit discussion involving individual personnel or students. Direct all remarks to the Chair. Community members may not poll individual board members nor debate other community members in attendance. Once again, members of the community are encouraged to attend and speak during public comments. Undue interruption or other interference with the orderly conduct of the Board of Education business will not be allowed. Defamatory or abusive remarks are always out of order. While, uh, while individuals have the right to email Board with questions or concerns at any time, the Board will not read emails aloud during the public participation portion of the meeting. Tonight, we have a special presentation. Well, leaders of the pack.
So Elementary School, Mr. Darling, and this is Samuel.
Do we ask if there's any public comment first?
Oh, yeah, that would be a good idea. Public comment first.
Yeah, actually, yeah. Rush through here. Is there any public comment? I'm sorry, dear. Nobody's gonna jump at that. Go ahead.
Good evening. Shannon Estrada is our Leader of the Pack for May. She is kind, respectful. She's a first grader in Mrs. Alardi's class, and her teachers share that she always comes in with a smile on her face. She is ready to learn, and she does her best with whatever the day brings. Shannon is a good friend to others and always has kind words to say. Ms. Alardi is proud of Shannon, and so are we for all of her accomplishments so far this school year. Congratulations.
So that's JJ, everybody. So I'll get to start talking about him a little bit. So, uh, we were talking about his name before, actually, and I was introducing him as JJ, which everybody is. And tonight, I said, JJ, how do you pronounce your last name again? And we had a little discussion on that, so, um... I'm trying to stall as like the Oscars or something. There you go. All right, very nice. So, um, JJ, uh, which we call him, Jamaya Eliasant Narcis, or Elias Saint Narcis, depending, right? Um, so, a lot of nice things to say about him. So, Ms. Caccato says she can always count on JJ to be an active participant in classroom discussions. Um, JJ comes ready to work and always raises the level of learning for everyone in the class. Um, I can truly say JJ makes coming to school every day such a joy for me, and that's Ms. Caccato. Ms. Ms. Perone, um, who's here, actually, says JJ strives to always do the right thing, even when it's hard to do. Ms. Harris said JJ is good-natured, kind student who is patient, always willing to stand up for what's right. Um, he's navigated a number of challenges throughout middle school, has remained positive and fun-loving. Mr. Kenny said his positive attitude lifts everyone's spirits in the building. Um, Ms. Ozzy said there is a calm air about JJ, which is a rarity for many eighth grade students, which I agree. And then I, uh, also wanted to add that, um, JJ approaches and addresses all students and staff maturity and poise. He is patient and understanding, yet passionate and critical, um, at the same time. Through many conversations I've had with JJ, um, he's, he's a student who's actually taught me more than I could have ever imagined. Um, I'll never forget what you've done for me as an educator and as a person, and I wanted to thank you, JJ, for your wisdom, courage, and grace. Students like you make me want to be a better leader and a better person. Good luck with what will surely be a successful high school career and beyond. Congratulations. She's shocked. Little bit of a surprise for her in her graduation year. Yes, that's why Mom and Dad didn't leave her here. Yes, exactly. We planned all this. Good evening again, everyone. So the high school's Leader of the Pack for this month is our very own Maggie Van Valkenberg. Her teachers obviously have amazing things to say about her. Ms. Otis adds Pepita, as she is lovingly referred to in our Spanish class, always has a smile on her face, always has a great attitude, always goes above and beyond, is ready to learn, not afraid to take risks, and always ready to help others. Mr. Tatum says, "When Maggie Van Valkenberg is around, we all work a little harder, smile a little wider, and act a little kinder." Whether you're a teacher, coach, teammate, or peer, that's the effect that Maggie has. She's one in a million. Coach Geller says, "The first one that pops into my head for Maggie is she's just amazing." She's an amazing student, athlete, has an amazing personality, amazing determination, an amazing leader, and an amazing friend to her peers. And Mr. Cosellino added, "Back in September, I asked some of our students if they'd be willing to help run a softball practice for seven and eight-year-olds. At the time, Maggie had only known me for a couple of weeks, but she quickly agreed to do it, was a great role model for the kids, and never expected anything in return." That's Maggie in a nutshell. She's enthusiastic, kind, helping, trustworthy, and puts others who need help first before herself. There's no better person for Leader of the Pack, and she is leaving big shoes to fill here at Highland High School. Congratulations.
So tonight, as we did, uh, a few, uh, meetings ago, we will be doing a, uh, presentation on the math curriculum that is underway at the elementary school with hopes that we can get this, uh, new math series approved at the upcoming board meeting in June, and, uh, we can move forward with a new series for the fall. So, Mr. Darling, I'm gonna turn it over to you, and I know you were going to have a member of your faculty with you this evening, but unfortunately, that's not happening because that member came down with COVID, so, um, so it's all falling on your shoulders. We know you're gonna do a great job. Have a...
Thank you for the buildup there.
Thank you.
Um, yeah, I just wanna shout Mr. Sommerfeld out, who's one of the teachers that's been piloting into math for the last few months, uh, really since winter break, and he had offered to be a part of this presentation, and unfortunately, uh, got sick yesterday. You know, I know he was looking forward to, to kind of walking you through his experience as a teacher with this program, so I'll try to do it a little justice for him. Uh, he did offer to zoom in, but I thought that, that wasn't necessary for this presentation, so, um, you're welcome to refer over here. It was also sent out digitally, so you should have a copy wherever you'd like to access it. But I'll start out just talking a little bit about our current curriculum, um, and that is something that teachers have really, uh, adopted from when the Common Core modules came out. Uh, it's something that they've adapted over the last ten years or so, um, so it's really taken the... By a few different programs that we wanted to investigate further, um, we ordered some sample materials and had some presentations from those companies, and that led us to, to Intumath ultimately, um, which is a, a product from Hoot and Mifflin, which I'm sure you've heard of, a big educational, uh, company, or educational material company. And so really, over the last few months, uh, since Christmas break, we've had teachers engaged in classes, engaged in working with these materials. Um, you'll see each person has a, a student workbook sample as well as a teacher workbook sample in front of you, and so, you know, feel free to peruse those things. Um, and then I also brought some other supplemental materials, uh, that are by Heather there, so feel free at any point to look through those, Heather, and, and pass them along to everybody, so everybody gets a chance to. Um, but lots of manipulatives, which is really important to our K-2 crew. Um, you know, and then for 3-5, one of the, one of the areas of focus was that ability to differentiate. So if a student is not getting, um, a skill right away, or not getting a skill after a few days, what access do we have to materials that we can, um, scaffold that learning for them? And help them understand that skill, maybe with a prerequisite skill. Um, you know, since we started the pilot, we've had a lot of informal as well as formal meetings with the group of teachers that offered to pilot the program. Uh, we have one classroom in each grade level, a mixture of ICT and Gen Ed classes, uh, and also one self-contained class using, using the pilot. And so the, the feedback has been overwhelmingly positive, you know, with any new program. Um, you know, we worked with our technology department, who's been great, and they worked with HMH, um, to get everything up and running there. And so there, there haven't, you know, been any, there hasn't been any issues that, um, have made a second guess moving forward with the program at this point. You know, and the teachers on the committee unanimously, uh, felt that it would be beneficial to move forward with it. So there's, there's lots of data and evidence, um, you know, again, that's one of the benefits of a program like this is that it's, you're guaranteeing that it's research-based. Uh, so it was released in 2020, and so some of the research since then has been, uh, just kind of interesting to read through. You're, you're welcome to read through those links, you know, on your own time if you'd like, because it was somewhat impacted by COVID, you know, and their ability to, to get, um, access to large groups of students that were in school over the course of, you know, that, that time. But the, the evidence that we've reviewed, um, and as well as talking to the company, you know, it's clear that when there's, um, fidelity in the implementation, even moderate-level fidelity with implementation, there's a large growth rate among students. Uh, there's also, one of the interesting things is, uh, some of the, some of the research that they've done has been across, uh, different subgroups, such as free and reduced lunch students, and there's a large ol', a larger learning differential, um, among those students, which is, you know, similar to the work we've done with TSI, um, and, and how we can better support students to close some of those achievement gaps. So the lesson design is basically, um, it starts off with a problem to spark student learning. Some of the problems are, it's Problem of the Day, they call it. Some of them are, are spiral reviews of previous concepts, um, others are, are just a quick, you know, kind of word problem to get students interested in what they might be learning about. Um, you know, for third grade, for example, the book in front of you, I saw a problem about, you know, counting kitchen tiles on the floor. And that was, that was used, um, in a picture to talk about how we might introduce the concept of area to students. You know, being able to count those, uh, kitchen tiles and then come up with the area of that kitchen floor. Um, so just lots of creative ways to get students engaged in the learning. And then, you know, with any math, good math curriculum, you're gonna build in lots of examples for students to practice. Um, so there's, there's a lot of that embedded, both in terms of conceptual practice as well as just kind of rote, um, skills, you know, because we, we will have students that can't always, um, fully comprehend the conceptual understanding behind something, but it's a must that they at least get the, the skill to that concept so that, that they're able to solve those problems. You know, we say the highest level of thinking is being able to teach it to, uh, somebody else well, and not every kid is gonna be able to do that for every concept, but they need to walk away being able to at least do that basic skill. Um, for students that are not picking up the concepts as quickly as we would like, um, or for students that are picking it up quicker than we would expect, there's lots of differentiation options, both through technology, um, as well as, you know, materials that the teachers can print out and, and give to students. Uh, some of those things are in, are in the booklets there. Um, and then, you know, again, there's a lot of, uh, connect, connections to home in terms of homework and extra practice that can be sent home with students, um, that's really connected to exactly the, the questions and the lesson in, in class. And, you know, that's something with the current, um, curriculum that we're using, that again, it would fall on teachers then to identify worksheets, you know, multiplication worksheets, for example, that closely connect to the problems that they're doing in class. Um, and so this is, it's, the format is gonna be much more familiar for students because it looks the same at school as it's gonna at home when it gets sent home, um, so there, there's certainly lots of benefits there. So, just to start off, you know, each lesson is broken down, as I said, into a problem of the day or a, a way to spark students' learning. There's, um, a lot of different opportunities for teachers to involve technology. I know, uh, Dan Sommerfeld, he's been using the interactive lesson on his smartboard, um, which is basically the student lesson adapted to a, a smart, you know, a smartboard-type file, so students could come up to the board as they're learning about it, um, to, to write their answers digitally on the board and move on that way. Other teachers, you know, myself, I would probably just project a version of the student workbook, um, you know, which is accessible for teachers as well. And then we'll, I'm sure we'll, we'll have some teachers that just use a document camera to project it that way and write, you know, um, pen and paper on the, under the document camera. So there's a lot of room for creativity, um, and to meet the teachers, you know, where they are in terms of the preferences that they've developed in their classroom. Uh, the, you know, the last piece of these lessons is an exit ticket. There's, you know, always a small check at the end just to, to determine if students are proficient in the skill, if they need more work, um, you know, and not let weeks go by without, without doing those little checkups to make sure that we're not leaving students behind with skills. Um, so you'll see in this next slide here, this is just an example. We kind of cut and pasted some of the resources that teachers would have access to. You know, I think one of the things that we'll experience, that we did experience in the pilot, but even, uh, will experience it more so if we, if we introduce it more broadly to teachers, is that there are so many resources, um, you know, which can be overwhelming after having, um, years of, of them kind of using those same, adapting, you know, the lessons slightly, but for the most part, they've been using those same lessons for a number of years now. And so I think, um, you know, through training and through team meetings, just helping teachers identify what the most valuable resources are gonna be for their classroom, um, such as, you know, some of the workbook, uh, materials there, as well as some of the digital manipulatives that they would have access to. Um, and so this is just a few examples, but there's about twenty-five resources per lesson. Um, so you might have, you know, resources to send home with students, resources for extra practice, uh, things to make them dive a little deeper into small group work with a concept. Um, but every lesson teachers would be able to click on and access those materials. And then one of the other benefits would be, um, you know, if I'm a third-grade teacher, for example, in the past, if I wanted access to second-grade materials, I'd have to go down to the second-grade wing and ask those teachers for them. Um, but by going with, with this program, every teacher would have access, K-5, um, to the digital curriculum. You know, I wouldn't get a, a hard copy second-grade teacher book, but if I wanted to log into my account and look at the second-grade curriculum online, you know, maybe I wanna print worksheets or, you know, prerequisite lessons from, um, from adding, for example, and that's gonna help my students bridge the gap to third-grade addition and subtraction. Uh, and so that's something that, you know, we've relied on communication, and the teachers are great communicators, um, but you also can't guarantee that they have that pathway and that connection to the previous grade level to have those conversations. Uh, in terms of family connections, uh, families would have a login so that they're able to view some of these resources, the ones that are pertinent to at-home help. Um, so let's say, you know, my child's working in Unit Three. I'd be able to log in, knowing what lesson they're on, um, download some additional, you know, worksheets or extra practice for, um, that I could either print, or we could do it online if we wanted to, um, just to work through with, with my child and make sure, you know, that they're getting what they need. Um, that's one of the big things I've heard from families throughout this process is that they, some of them know that their child is not performing up to where they need to be, and they're, the family is looking for help as to how they can help them at home. Um, and so having this kind of broad-based, you know, approach for people to access it as they please, um, I think would be, would be important. And so these are just some examples of some of the materials and resources for families. Uh, the Math on the Spot videos, um, are just skill, it's like a two- or three-minute video for teaching a skill. So if your child's struggling with, uh, multiplying fractions, you would be able to access this math on the spot, you know, play it with them at home if you choose to, um, and it shows you the same strategies that the teachers would be teaching in the classroom. You know, a lot of the feedback we've had from parents is that math is just so different from, you know, from when we went to school. Um, and so this gives them an avenue to, without emailing the teacher, uh, you know, or, or reaching out to the teacher, um, whether it might take a couple, a day or two to get back to them, they can just access it right at home. Uh, there's also a letter home there that's, that's, um, pictured where, you know, teachers could send those letters home to the class to say, "Over the next few days, we're gonna be engaged in learning about, um, X, Y, and Z. Here are some resources that you're able to use to help support your child," um, and so on and so forth. Again, that's something that a lot of teachers do already. They do newsletters, they have those conversations with families, but this is a, a foundational, you know, kind of a baseline that we can ensure everybody has the ability to do this, um, without spending, you know, excessive periods of time, of their own time, creating those things. Any, uh, any questions that I can help answer? Camille? It is, yes, so there are multiple languages. Every resource is available in English and Spanish, um, and then all the parent, the home letters are available in multiple languages, um, as well as the digital resources. You can, you can toggle with those as well to make sure that students, if they're listening to it digitally, they can hear it in their language, um, which is, is, you know, important.
Just a few questions on, I know you and I actually have talked quite a bit on the, on the program, and I'm certainly excited about it. I'm one of those parents with children who might be struggling a little bit here and there with the concept, right? And I'm being asked about it, and I'm saying, "Hold on one second, let me YouTube that one and see if I can figure out how they're teaching it now," you know? Just because as a parent, you wanna try to teach differently than, you know, the school is teaching them as well, and really confuse them a little bit more. So I think that those family resources is a phenomenal, um, improvement to what we have, and certainly want to appreciate the whole team who put in a lot of time to figure out what the right program was for our school. I think it's a, it'll be a huge improvement for all of our students in addition to our teachers. You know, just also want to express the appreciation for what they've put in over the years in terms of coming up with their own materials. That's not always easy, right? You're starting sometimes from a drawing board, right? You have other teachers who will help out. Um, but really, I mean, some of the material that I've had coming home when I've had a student who's struggling with a concept is handwritten. You know they're putting everything into it to try, but to have these resources there that can be used and readily available, I think is huge for all of our students. So appreciate everything that you guys have put into it. Um, I certainly am excited about it, um, but question to you is, how do you think the teachers in the elementary school will react to it? Is there enthusiasm around it? What is your overall thoughts about it?
Yeah, and I think that's something that's important to know, is that this kind of came up organically, um, both as part of our TSI conversation, when we posed the question, you know, what, what can we do differently to impact our students? But also just kind of early on in my observations, um, in our conversations with teachers over the last few years, you know, they, for a while, they felt tied strongly to the Engage modules, uh, the Engage New York modules. But I think now, um, because they've been kind of sliced and diced so much, you know, in terms of the way teachers have adapted them, they're looking, they're urinating for something to, to hold on to. Um, and then, again, talking to a lot of our, our veteran teachers, you know, that are kind of, um, shouldering the burden of getting new teachers up to speed, you know, I think they're, they're really interested in, in having something to, you know, not cut off that communication with new teachers, but again, just serve as a baseline so that when you come in every day, you know what it is that, that the grade level's gonna be working on. Um, you know, part of it also has been messaging. The, the message is not that we're doing everything wrong. There's a lot of great stuff going on in our building. There's a lot of, as you said, you know, hard work has gone into... on in our building. There's a lot of, as you said, you know, hard work has gone into the curriculum that the teachers are currently using. And so the idea wouldn't be to throw the baby out with the bathwater, you know, and I think teachers would need that support that there's going to be things that they do really well and they want to continue to use what they've used. But at the same time, we want to ensure that every student, whether, you know, I'm in this class or this class, I'm going to have access to the to the same learning, to the same concepts, you know, and and we've talked about how you might you might take three weeks to teach something where I spend a month and a half on it. And we've seen some of those discrepancies a little bit, and those those can grow into into learning gaps for students. And so I think when we have a scale for teachers to go off of, it just creates a simple way to start a conversation as a grade level in terms of, you know, this is a two week unit. And you're going to have teachers that are two weeks and three days, and you're going to have maybe ICT classes that are, you know, a little bit longer than that, for example, but but it keeps everybody on the same page.
I think that's important to still encourage the teacher creativity because sometimes that's priceless. Just one other question for me. Is this really a K through five or is it like first grade through?
It's K through five. And so that was kind of the hardest thing for us to find is, you know, K two teachers, they're really, really invested in the manipulative piece in our building. And also the game based approach, they want to have math centers, they want to have their students to be engaged in learning in that way. And three, five teachers have been looking for something that that helps their students feel a little more prepared for, like the math, you know, the New York State Math Assessment, for example. And if you've looked at the modules, they don't quite look like what students see on the day of a math test. And not that that's the end all be all, but you want to replicate those things as much as possible. So that students are feeling, you know, prepared and sure of themselves and confident when they're taking those assessments. So that was one of the challenges. And I know that's been a challenge in the past is just trying to get everybody on the same page about what they are most focused on. But, you know, with some of these programs from Hoot and Mifflin and some of the other ones we've looked at, they've spent a lot of money investing in not just a workbook, which I think was the primary fashion in the past, but the manipulatives, you know, some of the some of the cards and the flip charts that that we would receive for our AAS and for our younger grades. And so, you know, I think, all in all, the no program is is perfect. There's going to be challenges with it. But we felt that this was the one that most met our needs as a building. Any other questions? Thank you all for your time and support.
Thank you.
Principal's monthly report. No, 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 no.
We're gonna let you go after. We're gonna let them start and go backwards since you talk so much.
Good evening, everyone. I like going first. As a Z, I was always last online in school. So I have three additions to the high school principal's report. First, a countywide program, RYAN, R Y A N, which is raising your awareness about narcotics. It was presented to all of our ninth graders last Wednesday, May 11. Four speakers from the organization spoke with our freshman class and shared personal stories about the dangers of addiction. Part two of the event, which was a virtual youth rally, it was yesterday morning, May 16. Tony Hoffman, an Olympic BMX coach, spoke to all Oster County freshmen at the same time about his journey through addiction. All the freshmen were in the auditorium, and we had the Zoom set up, and he zoomed into all of all of the schools across the county. It was and there was even a Q and a Q and A at the end, and some of our students had some poignant questions and comments for the presenter. I have to say, it was time very well spent on this important cause. So thank you to the organizers of Ryan. Just this past Saturday, May 14, it was the first annual Osterhout Family Blood Drive right here in the high school cafeteria. It was hosted by the New York Blood Center and 71 units of blood were collected. And I'd like to thank all who were able to donate. Some exciting news about one of our freshman students, Highland High School freshman Elizabeth Ryan is a national gymnastic champion. Lizzie competed at the USA Gymnastics Eastern Championships in Rochester two weeks ago and was named the Junior Level Nine Eastern National Beam Champion. Lizzie trains 20 hours per week year round at the Eastern National Academy in Paramus, New Jersey. This season, her team won the New Jersey State Championships, and Lizzie was named the 2022 Junior Junior Level Nine New Jersey State Vault Champion. Talking to her, her favorite event is the vault, followed by the floor, then the beam and uneven bars. Congratulations to Lizzie Ryan. We may see her competing in the Olympics one day. We have her picture on the sign out front with the big congratulations to her. So congratulations to Lizzie. Exciting news. And that's all I have for you this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Coburn, you're still in the middle.
I know, no matter what. There you go. I'm used to it. All right. Good evening. First, I'd like to thank Sue Gilmore for coming and visiting our school on Friday. She came to Ms. Jansen's math class to see our Ed Gems in full action. So thank you very much for coming to see that. I also wanted to say Mr. Conrad and I are super excited for this Thursday and Friday. Our fifth graders are coming into the middle school. It's always a very exciting time for them to come in. They get a tour. We do a whole Q and A with them. There's an excitement in the building that you get when you see the fifth graders here. And then we also know the end of the year is coming super quickly, and there's tons of events coming up for that. And the last thing I'd like to talk about or give a shout out to is Mr. Donahue. And his writer's workshop classes this past Thursday and Friday did a Shark Tank style presentation. Mr. Conrad was actually one of the judges one of the days, and students gave a presentation about a product or an advertisement that they were trying to sell to a group of guest speakers. So teachers volunteered and administration was there, and we could give out fake checks and, you know, like we could bargain with people. The students were extremely excited. They're still waiting for to see who won because there's two separate classes. But it created a great excitement. They all presented in front of their peers and in front of staff members, which was huge. So a huge shout out to him as well for putting that together for our students. And that was grade six through eight. So our writer's workshop is, it doesn't matter which grade you're in, you can be in that class. So it was nice to see different grade levels working together and collaborating as well. And that's it.
Okay, I've got to talk a little bit about this, Megan. I had fun on Friday. For all of my fellow board members, the teacher, Shemin, Shemin.
Mrs. Jansen.
She had, I think, a class of 20 students, 10 tables, two students at each table. Each student had a worksheet, which was also reflected on the smartboard. And each sheet, I think, was a different color. I have never seen such a class of engaged, active students who were able to help me through the program, through the problems, because I had absolutely no clue. And I want to give kudos to you because they said it makes this learning easier. And that spoke volumes. And they were so, they were so excited. They were so invigorated. They had so much energy. And I swear, that that period just went like lightning. And great job, great job. Please give my congratulations to her as a great teacher.
I will. Thank you. She had a great time. She always does. That's all I have.
Any questions?
Thank you very much.
So just two additions to my board report from last week. I wanted to shout out the Rotarians, our junior achieve, which they kind of created the junior achievement within our building. And so we had about 36 classes participate, 35 classes participate in junior achievement this year, which was great. Lots of Rotarians, as well as just people from the community coming out to teach those lessons to students. They had an assembly on Friday that Christian Grasso had organized and has been, you know, somewhat of a tradition in the building. And we had a great turnout from the fire department, police department, town planning board, and and other town officials. And just a lot of people coming out to talk to the students about what it is that they do in in town, thank our teachers for what they do in the school building, and just a really great event, you know, that I hadn't seen before since I've been here. So it was nice to see that. I'd also like to shout out Mrs. Hopper, first grade teacher in the elementary school. Over the weekend, she participated in Rock the Ridge at Mohawk in New Paltz, 50 mile race. So she she ran it in 14 hours, which, you know, I keep telling her, I don't even like driving 50 miles. So she, you know, just shout out to her. She's trained for about a year, well, maybe eight months for that race. If you've driven through the middle school at night, you've probably seen her running up and down the hill or through the elementary school, you've probably seen her running up and down the hill on our property. And so she did a great job. She was walking around today like she didn't do any races over the weekend or anything. So kudos to her. Any any questions? Thank you all.
Thank you. Does anybody have questions of any of our directors regarding their reports? Thank you. Okay, we are now at the consent part of our agenda. Looking at A1 through E1 inclusive. Does anybody have anything they would like to pull aside right now? So that we can discuss or and or vote on separately? No? Okay, can I have a motion, please? Ed? Camille? This is A1 through E1 inclusive. All in favor? Hi. Anybody opposed? No? Six zero.
These new clubs, the Junior Youth Peer Leaders Club, this is exciting.
Okay, so we have quite a few folks in the audience that I'd like to introduce to the board officially. Did I just lose my mic? There we go. So with us this evening, we have Richard Fisher. He's our new director of technology. Welcome aboard. We have Kaylee Burnett, who will be a science teacher at the middle school. Megan Carey, not new to our district, but moving from general education, oh, sorry, special education to general education at the elementary school. We have Emma Dorrer, who will be a special education teacher at the elementary school. And I don't see Mike Pura. I know he's probably running around the district somewhere, working hard. But Mike Pura is now the head custodian at the high school. So thank him when you see him. And I believe Regina Bolson is here. Yep, she's over there in the corner. Regina will be an elementary teacher at the elementary school. Thank you all for being here and welcome to Highland. You're going to enjoy your years here. Thank you so much. We also, this evening, accepted the retirement of Peggy Creamer. I don't believe she's with us this evening. Peggy's been a teaching assistant at the elementary school for the last 14 years, and we wish her well as she heads off into retirement. So thank Peggy when you see her. Thank you, Peggy. And that's all I have.
I just wanted to echo what Joel said also. It's important for us as board members to personally meet and see the individuals that we are hiring. So thank you again for showing up. Really do appreciate it.
And then I would also say that if any of you are local Highland residents, you have one hour left to cast a ballot. So that's down the hall. So any of the folks that want to leave now that you've been approved, feel free to. Have a great night. Thank you.
Okay. Student rep, Maggie? You're up.
Hello, everyone. Okay. So starting off with the elementary school, Ms. Eckert and Ms. Elliott's fifth grade classes worked on models of the solar system. And other students around the building were also invited to check it out. So it was really important for them to learn about something that the fifth graders were kind of teaching them. Ms. Fasano and Ms. Hallick's class played a student created game of listening to facts. And this is a very educational and fun activity for students. At the middle school this Friday and Saturday at seven o'clock in the high school auditorium, the middle school students will be hosting a musical named Moana. Please be sure to check it out. National Junior Honor Society is hosting a spare week that includes Sports Day, USA Day, Tourist Day, Dress Like a Teacher Day, and finally, Color Wars on Friday. At the high school this past Saturday, interact members helped out. Spring at Spring Fest, we had one booth and we were kind of helping out there. There were a lot of students that were very interested and involved helping out. The Future Medical Professionals Club held an event at the Firehouse, as I mentioned at the last meeting, and it went very well. We got a lot of COVID tests gone. And you could tell that they were really enjoying it. We had about 10 volunteers from the club and a little over 10 people, like senior citizens that came. So it was it was really great. The high school enjoyed our spare week last week for seniors. And these days included Monday was Career Day, Tuesday was Adam Sandler Day, Wednesday was White Lie Wednesday, Thursday was Senior Citizen Day, and Friday was Anything But a Bag Day. And then finally, this Saturday, SUNY Oster, some of the high school students will be graduating at SUNY Oster with their associate's degree. There are six seniors that will be graduating. So that's going to be something really great for, that's a really great opportunity. Personally, I'm one of them. So it's, it's just been a great experience being able to graduate with my associate's degree before getting my high school diploma. So yeah, that's really great.
I would just like to thank you for your work with that Future Medical Professionals Club this year. That that club for a brand new club has done so many things for our community, and we are indebted to your group and especially your leadership in getting that club up and going for our district. And now it will be a club into the future. So thank you. You're gonna put your stamp on that.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you. I mean, I tagged him in my post, so hopefully he saw it. But it was really funny. You could like, you just walk around the school and see everyone in like, big baggy clothes and like, baseball caps. It's really funny.
Senior citizens, it was actually quite interesting to see, too. I thought we had a lot of injured kids walking past my window with crutches and walkers. I didn't know what that was about. I soon found out. That's great fun.
Okay, Patrick.
Good evening, everyone. Just a couple of things. I don't know. All right, how's that? One of the couple of things I just wanted to note, our state performance plan. So we were required to report last year on feedback from parents and guardians on our IEP meetings. And we just got our results back. I actually talked about this last summer, but we got our results back. And we had a 95.5% positive parental response, which shows, hopefully, that we are, you know, doing a good job communicating with our parents, and they feel good about the services that we're providing, our communication, our meetings, that we're taking the time to work with them. You know, some of the questions were kind of interesting when you think about that, because a lot of the because a lot of times they'll ask about, you know, how we think they're doing with the child. And the focus is always on the student, which obviously is what we want it to be, but some of the questions were actually focusing on them as a parent. You know, one of them was, over the past year, special education services have helped me and/or my family feel more confident in my skills as a parent. You know, I think sometimes we don't always think about that. So when we looked at these questions, even though we got a, a positive response rate on some of them, it made us reflect on the work we do and our preparation for those meetings and the conversations that we are having with parents. So we did have quite a great response. And again, that was a big thanks to Michelle McGrath last summer, who spent a lot of time coordinating with parents to help them fill out the survey because it can be difficult to navigate and can be difficult to get some responses on some of those. So thank you to her. We had a hundred and fifty-six responses out of the two hundred and eighty-five surveys that we had, and we needed to have at least seventy-two. So we doubled what our requirement was. On top of that, some of our folks, I mentioned last meeting, this is Mental Health Awareness Month, and we're doing some activities throughout the schools. I know some of the principals put, noted some of that, Ms. Coburn, the great bulletin board that they have at the middle school. And, you know, some of the conversations I've been having with some of our social workers and psychologists was this idea that, you know, we're seeing new needs from students. You know, we're talking about the mental health needs and the social learning, social emotional learning aspects of their experiences. And having the resources for teachers in the moment or at the time for some of these situations. So we're looking to build a social emotional library, so social stories. And a lot of this pertains a lot to the elementary school, but can be used at the secondary levels as well. But having resources for teachers to go to that have texts and stories that can be used in their classrooms in the moment or very shortly after the moment, after an incident happens or somebody shares something, and we start to bring up some of these feelings that maybe we, some of our teachers and our staff haven't had as much experience with. So that's going to be one of our goals, is that we're trying to build this library of access for all of our staff members to turn to when they do come across some of these situations where they feel like they need some extra support in that area. So thank you to our staff who are working on building that library and those resources for everyone. Thank you to our business office, Ms. McLaren, Ms. Idell, for helping to put in all of our information for our Medicaid cost reports. The entire Medicaid process requires a lot of steps, a lot of paperwork, a lot of documentation, and a lot of time and effort to get, you know, to get those reimbursement in that. So thank you to them for all the information that they helped input into the system so we can certify those reports. And we, we do have a new representative from our management advisory group. It's the same group that we've been working with, but the gentleman who we've worked with for the past, I mean, and since I've been here and before me, but they, is stepping down into a different role, so we have some new folks. So we'll be meeting with them in a couple of weeks at the beginning of June. We've been working with them, you know, virtually, but it'll be nice to get to meet them in person as we build our relationships with them. Other than that, as part of the American Rescue Plan, we did get some IDEA funds. So we will be looking at, some of that money does come through us and get sent to some of the private preschools and some of the private schools that our students do attend. So there is some of that flow-through money, but then there's some of that money that we can help. And typically, in our regular six-eleven and six-nineteen allocations helps offset a lot of our special education teacher salaries. So we'll probably look to defer some of that money to there, but it also gives us some options for some other programming needs that we might come across.
Question about the therapeutic transition program? That wasn't your report? So just any more details? We have so many spots available for Highland, or is it?
Both. So TTP has been around for a couple of years through Ulster Bosse's. It's basically our IDT. So you can't call it IDT, there's only a certain amount that they can throughout the state. So this is a similar program for students in transition, sometimes coming out of a hospitalization, sometimes as a transition to a different program, sometimes is just removal from the current program, you know, if there's something going on that they can go to this program and then transition back. It was only available at the secondary level, and they're looking for the first time next year to make it a K through twelve program because unfortunately, we are seeing a need for it at the elementary level and more than we have in the past. And there's really not a lot of programs available. And the spots that are in some of those IDT programs on the other side of the river in Dutchess County are booked, and the waitlist is, is pretty long. So having a place that, you know, sometimes a student in crisis can go, that's not a hospital, but is, is a place for them in a time of crisis will be helpful. So we did look to make some commitments for a few students for next year for the possibility of it.
Anybody else? Thank you.
Okay, just a couple of reminders. We still have the Highland Central School District Art Show going on till the end of the month at the public library. There are some Facebook posts going up with some of those images, but nothing better than getting in there and seeing the artwork up close. So I encourage anyone who has not had a chance to please visit the library before the end of this month. We had a superintendent's conference day last Friday, or a week ago Friday. Our teachers were engaged in technology sessions, minimally one technology session per teacher. Some did more than that. As I mentioned at a previous meeting, those are all eligible for those CTE hours that many of our teachers do need to keep their certifications active. Also, at the elementary school, they screened, I think it was seventy-four. Seventy-four kindergarteners, which is a little lower than normal, but Elizabeth in our registrar's office will be getting additional packets out in the coming weeks. I do think some parents are still on the fence as to whether they are going to join us next year, so we do have to be prepared for that. I want to thank Victoria for being my partner in crime during the last two weeks. We've done approximately, I think, nine or ten, I think it was going to be ten, I think it ended up being nine because last night's got canceled, budget presentations in the community, and hopefully that information helped folks make decisions about the budget vote that is going on this evening. Forty-five minutes left, if anyone is out there listening. Also, just a reminder, the direct meeting will happen on May thirty-first at six PM. That is a Zoom meeting, so if anyone is interested in joining that group, I'm not sure if they're going to get a June meeting in because of scheduling, so this might be the last one for this school year. But we, Mr. Zimmer, myself and Dr. Boyd met with Harriet, the advisor to the group, to talk about next steps and presentations for the coming school year. If you remember, last year, we did a presentation and a wrap-up on July first, and it was not well-attended because it was the middle of the summer. So we thought it might be helpful to have a kickoff to that group for next year and do something closer to Sept-, in the September month, to kick off the activities for the school year. And she will also be doing some curriculum writing over the summer with teachers at all levels. Just a reminder, I know yesterday was a little iffy, but we still have one snow day left that will be given back to the, to the community on May twenty-seventh, that is the Friday of Memorial Day, unless something happens between now and then. But I don't think we're going to get any more rain or sleet or snow or whatever. Yeah, the powers that be decide to send our way. Hopefully, that's all over with. I do want to just inform the public to please keep up to date with our district calendar. Our building administrators have been very diligent in getting that district calendar up to date. So all of the events that are occurring in the next two months are on that calendar with links and important information about things that are going on for our students. So if you have not seen that, please take a look. Thank you to Mr. Murphy, our high school assistant principal. He and I were in attendance on Friday or Saturday morning for the blood drive, but I would be remiss if I did not mention that he worked very closely with the family to get that organized and set up. So thank you, Kevin, for doing that. You already mentioned Moana, so I won't plug that again, but I will plug it, I will plug it in my Friday update. Moana is this Friday and Saturday, so make sure you go. I want to thank Pete Miller and Kathy McCulloch for their quick response to yesterday's early dismissal. When we came to work yesterday morning, no one had any idea that there was a possibility that we might have to consider an early dismissal. When schools around us started to act quickly, we were in contact with emergency management in Ulster County, and we also did an early dismissal. Kathy and Pete, thank you for your help. And Kathy, if you could please just extend our sincere appreciation to your driving crew for getting back here so quickly and getting all of our, our students home safely. And then just a final thing, I was hoping that it would be prepared for this evening, but our mentor coordinator, Shannon Ramirez, has been working on a PowerPoint presentation for the board to be introduced to this last year's slate of new teachers. So they are in a mentoring program, and she's the head of the mentoring program. She put together a PowerPoint presentation that highlights something about each mentor and each mentee. And the PowerPoint slide is quite lengthy. If you remember, we had quite a few new hires last year. So I hope to get that to the board by Friday in my Friday update, and it will be available for all to see. It was quite an undertaking, and it was great to see that all come together. Any questions? Okay.
Thank you. Board of Education, new business. Is there any new business anybody wants to bring up? Old business?
Yes. About a year and a half ago, Joel, you might have been at the meeting, a group of students made a presentation on the possibility of granting a mental health day. And I was wondering if we could consider revisiting that.
I don't have an answer for you on that. I will have to investigate that to see if that is.
Yeah, Tom, Tom was the superintendent, but you might have.
Yeah, I will have to investigate that to see if that is something that is allowable to get state aid on. So I don't know the answer to that this evening, but we will take a look at it.
Okay, thanks.
Anything else?
I just want to acknowledge the microphones are fantastic tonight, so great job.
They, great job, and these are not the new ones, just to tell you.
Any correspondence anybody's received that they might want to let the rest of us know about? No? Thank you. Public comments. Sorry about that earlier. Didn't really look like anybody was jumping out of their seats, so that's okay. Anything else? Motion to.
Just, just thank you to Lisa and the poll workers for today. I know it's a lot of, it's a big undertaking, so I just appreciate all the work.
Motion to adjourn.
We're going to go back into executive. Are we going back into executive session?
No, you're right. That's right. So we, going into executive session, personnel.
I wanted to test my mic and see if it was good, too. So I'll make a motion. I'll second.
Second. So.
Are you going to say we're not returning?
Thank you. And we are not returning. We hope to be in the room for, prior to the, prior to the vote ending. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.